With a pledge of allegiance, and I would ask you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you call the roll, please?
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. DeLoro?
Here.
Mr. Speckert?
Here.
We have the honor this evening of, in recognition of the very important work of our first responders, firefighters, paramedics, to conduct swearing-in of our firefighter/paramedic personnel. And for that purpose, I want to turn it over to our chief, Chief Wensing.
Thank you, Trustee Young. And thank you for being here this evening on what is a beautiful afternoon, beyond my expectations, and I appreciate you taking the time. So I think we can momentarily take a blind eye to the fire code violations we may have here. But tonight, this afternoon, you'll be witnessing the swearing-in of a lieutenant, as well as full-time firefighter/paramedics and part-time firefighter/paramedics, EMTs, as well as firefighter trainees and EMT trainees. Before we start the ceremony, I'd like to recognize, and the lieutenants, if you would please have these people come forward, I'd like to recognize those that are currently serving in the armed forces. If I would please call Seth Duckett, who currently is serving with the Ohio Army National Guard. Doug Dunwald, who is also serving with the Ohio Army National Guard. Bruce George. This is Bruce A. George, who has served in the Marine Corps from 2017 to 2022. And Bruce George. Bruce George served in the United States Navy from 1986 to 1990. And again, we appreciate these men's service to the armed forces. Gentlemen, please reassemble. Also, we didn't have an opportunity to poll those in attendance, so if there is someone in the audience who has served, I would ask that you please rise or are currently serving, so we can recognize you also. Fantastic. Thank you very much. At this time, Captain Simic, if you would please assemble your lieutenants that will be sworn in. If you please raise your right hand. I... That's fine. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/paramedic lieutenant of Springfield Township, Summit County, Ohio, during my continuance of employment. Congratulations. At this time, if there's some, a family member who wishes to officially pin the badge to these gentlemen, please come forward. And if you gentlemen would like to introduce your family member. Reassemble. And I'd just like to point out, I appreciate Danny Bean here tonight. She had a very important, previous engagement she broke to be here, I understand it. She had a banquet for the drama club that she is so kind to. You'll be able to make the second half, correct? Okay, at this time, if the lieutenants would assemble once again and request your full-time, that'll be sworn in to assemble.
These are our full-time?
That should be good.
The taller guys are pretty new, aren't they?
Those of you that are being sworn in, please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/paramedic of Springfield Township, Summit County, Ohio, during my continuance of employment. Congratulations, gentlemen. Gentlemen, if there's someone you would like to officially pin your badge, we'll have you individually come up front.
I think I probably can.
Can you get it? Mr. and Mrs. Speckert, did you choose to want to introduce the person who pinned your badge?
What's that? Oh, sorry, that was my son Chase.
Good Chase.
This is my mom, Prashen. This is my mom, Cher.
This is my dad, Tom Wilson.
Each, each one of the full-time serve the direction of one of the lieutenants. So that's a, every third shift, that's a constant complement. The next group, even though they're assigned to either an A, B, or C shift, can sign up and work any shift. But for the sake of communication, for the sake of monitoring trainings, we assign them to a specific shift. So the lieutenants assemble your part-time. Gentlemen, if you please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/EMT/paramedic of Springfield Township, Summit County, State of Ohio, during my continuance of employment. Congratulations.
One of these guys just started today, so I hope I remember his name. Closest to me is Jake James. You're gonna do it to me, aren't you? Teddy Quaktemeyer, was I close? All right. Alexander Jensen. What's your first name? Aaron Gurley, he just started today.
Lieutenant, if they could raise their hand as their name is called, it'd be nice. Very good.
In front of him, Tommy Gower. Next to him is Doug Dunwald. Behind Doug is Jacob Chapman. Next to him is Greg Soule. Oh, I knew I was gonna do that. Charles, Charles Lyle. He's also new, he's on orientation. See how I do with your last name. Adriano Shone. Awesome. He's our German connection. Matt Carr. Bruce A. George. And Jamie Chapman.
And the part-time will reassemble to their respective groups, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Chief. It is very interesting to sit up here and to observe the pride that family has in, in our firefighter/paramedics. And I have to say, it is really heartwarming to see the turnout and the support. And we want you to know that we feel strongly, in a positive way, about those who are our first responders. They, they do a great job for the citizens of Springfield Township. And I guess in behalf of my colleagues, I want to thank the family members, because I know that there's sacrifice that, that you've been through as they go through their training, and that you continue to go through as they serve us. So we want to thank you. Thank you all. My, my understanding is that there's a reception in the fire hall. And so although we have more business that we have to do, and we have a suspicion you may not be thrilled to hang around for the business, we're gonna go in recess for about 10 minutes or so. Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief. We stand in recess.
They can all come back, though, after the...
And I'm gonna jump into our agenda. Initially, the, we had before us in our last meeting a matter dealing with 529 James Avenue. After review of the complaint that is pending regarding the condition of the property at 529 James Avenue, parcel number 51-03655, I move that this matter be continued pending a further report from our zoning administrator.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Next, a matter dealing with 1025 Onondago Trail. After review of the pending complaint regarding the condition of this property at 1025 Onondago Trail, which is parcel number 51-1036, I move that this matter be continued pending a further report from our zoning administrator.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Next, as to the condition of property at 1840 Orchard Lane. After review of a pending complaint regarding the condition of the property at 1840 Orchard Lane, which is parcel number 51-06937, I move that this matter be continued pending a further report from the zoning administrator.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro, you have some motions for the administration and our fiscal office?
Yes. I move to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes to date.
I would second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. I move to approve payment of bills and payroll as prepared by the fiscal officer, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. I move to acknowledge receipt of the fiscal officer's March 2023 reports, subject to audit.
I would second that motion.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. And I move to approve the hiring of Angela Brubaker to a part-time position in the administration department, effective 5/15/2023, paid at the rate of $18 per hour as an at-will employee, contingent on satisfactory completion of the physical examination and drug screening.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes. Sorry, I was on the roll, sorry. I might as well finish, yes. So for the zoning department, I move to approve the appointment of Lori Mace to the Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate with the term of two years to commence on May 2023 and ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
Is there any other matters coming before this board this evening? Anyone here has a matter for us to consider? Yeah, the question, will you be, you think you'll be able to get a rep from...
No, we decided not to bring him in because Joe just had basic information.
Yes, as far as the aggregate from NOPEC for the electric, the township is signed up, or we are a part of the aggregate for gas, but not for electric. We would just recommend that you go online to apples-to-apples and try to search and find out which one is providing the best rate and term at this time for your electric bill. NOPEC does offer that, so you can sign up with them, but it would just be whatever rate they have at this time.
But you're not automatically in for the gas?
You're not on, and as far as the gas aggregate, you still have to sign up for that. So it's not one of these things where you're forced to. You can still, if you want to shop a different provider for that and find the best deal, you can. Just because we're in an aggregate with them, it does not necessarily mean they have the best rate. They may, or they may not, I don't, I did not research that, so I can't tell you. But yeah, we just recommend you go online and try to find the best deal, because as I'm sure everyone's seen in the paper, the utility prices are gonna be on the rise here. So we'll do what we can to try to provide the best information on rates and everything for you. I do believe we have the stuff from NOPEC on our website right now, the stuff that they sent us.
We were going to get it on there.
Or we're going, yeah, from the email. So on our website, there will be information, yes, from them.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else has a matter that we have to consider? If not, I'm gonna move that we adjourn.
I would like to thank everybody who came out to the cleanup Sawyerwood Day and our road guys who've worked really, really hard to help us, went above and beyond, and our chief, Jack Simone, for organizing it again and giving up his time. And I think we need to thank Ricky Justice, who helped a senior resident and brought in some filter to take care of an issue on her property, and we're very grateful for that.
And you sort of recruited him to do some work here at the veterans?
Yes. Yeah, he did the veteran site today.
Yes.
And they'll be redoing that, and we will have a Memorial Day ceremony there.
You have a way of recruiting people. That's a compliment.
By the way, I need something for...
Oh, yeah. I have to be somewhere right away after the meeting. Anyway, is there, Chief, was there also cleanup way relative to the lake?
Right now, we're not sure if we're gonna cancel it, because it's getting late in the season, because we weren't able to do it last weekend, so.
Okay.
Not sure right now.
So there'll be further announcements?
But you and I were out there, you mowed and I picked up trash, so.
Yeah. And so, though it's not announced and organized, we're still able to do that? Okay. But maybe after the meeting, I'll get a little report from you?
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I, am I allowed to make the motion to adjourn?
No, we have more stuff, more...
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Spade and neuter your dog, how about that?
Yeah, make sure you spade and neuter your pets. But also, the weather's getting nice, we got summer concerts starting June 2nd. Fill in the blanks, block four on the 9th, and Third Alarm, you'll get to see some of our firemen there, the Third Alarm on June 16th, and then my friend Jack on the 23rd to help kick off Rock the Docks. So the weather is beautiful right now. I know it's probably gonna change a little bit, but hopefully by June 2nd, it'll be like today, right? And also Steak on the Lake is back this weekend. We have a pretty good turnout, I think, for pre-sale tickets, and hopefully it just continues to grow like before. Before, we had to take that little hiatus there due to a little thing they call the pandemic and some other issues. But we're trying to bring some activities back for all residents to enjoy, so. And the Farmer's Market, stay tuned, it will be coming this year.
June 15th, 3 to 7?
If you want to be there on that first day, there's gonna be a special giveaway there. You might get your very own Springfield Farmer's Market grocery bag.
Now, what day, so people know what day in the week?
It's, it's gonna be on Thursday night.
Yeah, Thursday night, so you can get some vegetables and then come into our meeting. It would be awesome, just don't throw the tomatoes.
Every Thursday, it starts on the 16, or the 15th, and then we'll be off because of Rock the Docks, and then the actual grand opening will be the 8th of July, the first Thursday in July.
And for all those of you at home watching on Spectrum Channel 1023, remember, this is the Springfield and Lake Moore Community Channel. It is proud to serve our communities, and it is your channel. So tune into local Spectrum Channel 1023 for a selection of recent programming. To view our current program schedule, tune into the channel or go online at springfildtownship.us. Right now, they're excited to announce that trustees' meetings are now broadcast live on Channel 1023. I don't know if the trustees are excited about that, but we like the delay, but we are now live. So also, community members, you may now access all current and past programming on demand via our new YouTube channel. Find it by searching Springfield Lake Moore Community Channel on YouTube. Even more community, community information is available from us on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and the Channel 1023 blog. If there's something you'd like to see broadcast, don't be shy, let them know. So this is your channel. Currently, the following programs are running. Mrs. Hannah presents the Top 25 Excellent Award Banquet at the, from the high school. Port Summit Rotary Club Ohio, the Four Way Test Speech Contest. The Village of Lake Moore Council Regular Meeting from May 1st, and the Springfield Township Regular Meeting from April 27th.
Okay, thank you. The Steak on the Lake event is this Saturday?
This Saturday.
The 13th, and what time?
6 to 9?
6 to 9.
6 to 9. Is there still tickets if...
Tonight, you have to call me by 9 o'clock tonight.
Okay. So if we're live, maybe somebody will... Okay, now I'm allowed to make my motion?
Now you're allowed to make your announcement.
Okay, I, I move that we adjourn, and we enjoy some of this weather that we've been waiting for.
Second.
My suggestion is that when we talk, instead of talking to each other, talk right into your microphone. I hear a major voice, we're not all checked.
Okay, thank you for the suggestion, Holly. Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. DeLoro?
Yes.
We're adjourned.